Yes, sir. And I've got all mics. I'm all mic. Oh, wait a minute. Wait, 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 wait. Come on now.
Nope.
Come on now. I got nothing.
I got nothing.
I got nothing.
Okay, we're gonna have to chalk up tonight. Because it appears that the mics are out. I apologize to the audience because it may be a little more difficult to hear us. But we'll do the best we can. Luckily, there's not very much on the agenda. So none of our voices should be gone by the end of the meeting. The city council meeting for January 3rd, 2011 will now come to order. Please remember time indicated next to agenda items or approximately start times only. Please turn off all cell phones and pages in the meeting. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
See if your lights are flashing.
Not yet.
Are your lights flashing now?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Mayor and the town.
Here.
Mayor Portman Snyder.
Here.
Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have the form.
Thank you very much. Will you please rise from your silence and then join me if you say the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, would we please pass around the microphone for introductions?
Allen Howard.
Yale Sander. Larry Tom.
Jean Leffler.
Lord Bishop.
Greg Thompson.
Danny Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Dan Stattler.
These are your four day, our governor's commission.
The block at you, please.
With the vice director by common development.
John, our information technology.
Thank you very much. Since nobody's signed up for a citizen communication tonight, we're gonna go right directly to... No, because we have to guess back and forth. Yeah, it'll be fine. Nobody's had any problem hearing me. I'll be going directly to approval of minutes, and there's only one set of minutes before council this evening for approval. They're the meeting minutes for the meeting of November 8th, 2010. Before vote, voting. Before voting on the minutes of November 8th, you need a motion to allow Mayor Portman Tracy Snyder to abstain from voting because of his huge absence. I have a motion, second.
Second.
Okay, because those are not working too. No, I'll try to keep an eye on everybody. I have a motion and a second to allow Mayor Portman Snyder to abstain from voting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same, motion passed. We'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 8th. Ms. Teeter.
Yes, we will approve the minutes of November 8th, 2010.
Mr. McAdams.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of November 8th, 2010. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same, motion passed the same. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda this evening. Councils reminded, these items can be removed from the consent agenda for discussion purposes at the request of any council person. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, open to a motion, Mr. McAdams.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Snyder.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of ordinance Z455-87-10. An ordinance amending ordinance Z455-87 by deleting zoning conditions for the property described in Section 8 passed here to made a part thereof and located at the southwest corner of Honor 4th Avenue and Avanna Street, Commerce League, Colorado. Title of ordinance 1837. An ordinance amending the 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the failed grant in the amount of $36,606 for the support of the community justice program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordinance 1846. An ordinance amending the 2011 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Board, CATPA, grant award in the amount of $17,357 for cameras, overtime costs, warranty fees, training, and administrative fees to provide continuing assistance with the recovery of stolen vehicles and authorization of the expenditure thereof. That's the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir. I've had a motion and a second. City attorney has read the title. Request a roll. All vote please.
Is it working? Yeah?
Yes. It's blinking now. Try pushing it. You gotta first push, we need to first push the one that says press it, that's blinking. And then, then the other should like...
Gotcha.
Gotcha. I just don't, Ms. Mara, I don't think it's gonna come up on here. You may have to read it from there.
Oh, boy. Alright, let's do this right voice. Sorry. Okay. Moreno.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Snyder.
Yes.
Teeter.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Bullock.
Yes.
Matal.
Yes.
The vote is nine aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gaylor. I just got some information that possibly somebody's walked in who wanted to do something for citizen communication. And I know we're running really fast.
Is the frog in the chair, you can call how bad.
Would one of you, being the last gentleman, if you did in fact want to talk, or... Did you, did you want to come forward tonight?
Yes.
We're gonna, if it's okay with council, does anyone in council have any objection to a certain person coming up for citizen communication, even though it is out of state? Not seeing anything, sir? Would you like to come forward?
I would love to.
We're having a little problem with...
That's okay. Good afternoon and Happy New Years to council. I didn't learn this, so I reside in the northern part of Commerce City at Orangeville, the middle of 94 Hamilton Street. And the reason why I'm here today to address the council, I had a chance to learn some wonderful news about one of my favorite projects. And I'm here to address the council to you, thank you, about the information that was shared with me about the food market that's gonna take place and our hard work, your due diligence, each one of you, sir. It's just an honor to know that everyone here, each one of you, I should put it wrong, but we're the only one. But being so, so, again, so hard on us. And Mayor, on the deck, you for your leadership too. Because some of the community needs, there's a lot of revenue out there that's getting way from us. And again, I just want to say thank you. Sorry I got here late, I'm going late for my job. It just shows the compassion that you have to the community. So my New Years' wish to you all is a huge thank you for making this a reality. And I think I was still about 2012. We should have something up there. And again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Also, thank you, Ms. Teeter, Ms. Johnson, Mr. McAdams, Mr. Bullock, Ms. Carson, and Benson, and Moreno, thank all of you.
Thank you.
Also, one of you said to thank out the staff also.
As is staff. Well job, well done. Thank you, and your perseverance is just unbelievable. Thank you.
Ms. Teeter.
And I wanted to say, I saw you walk in, and I told the mayor, says this man is basically very nice. Anyway, we, we knew of the happenings and the discussions, but we weren't allowed to share that information at the time of a board meeting or anything, but all of us did work hard on the staff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. It's tremendous work. And I sure hope you're up here when I get this. Mr. Benson, and all of those up there saying some good things about you. And also to you too, Ms. Teeter. Wonderful. Great way to start your year off.
Yes, it is.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm kind of in a capway place. We had another gentleman just walk in. I didn't know if he approached council or if he's just here to... Do you have one, one more? That would, that would be fine. Put the speakers out, and being that we've only had 10 minutes and we're most of the way through this meeting, a lot of people would have been late. So if you want to come forward, please? We'll, we'll just need a name and address for the record. And you'll just come up here and introduce yourself, and then tell us what you'd like us to know. Your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Bradley Woltersberger. 9605 East 100th.
Perfect.
I'm sorry. I have to school again. It's okay. So, okay, your name again.
Bradley Woltersberger. And how do you spell that? 9605. East 100th. Well, I'm here because I'm running the spread love campaign. And, and I would like to get my church involved, but if you could do that, I need a letter of recommendation from you to say that you approve of this project. And this project to say we already approved it, through the absentee committee, so.
Mr. Gaylor. Would, or Mr. Aker, if you could just give us a short little something, a piece of paper? We could have someone put a letter together for you. I imagine what you're trying to do is you're just about to collect the peanut butter and jelly and give it to the group. It's a great program. It's a terrific place to do it. Council have any challenge with us? Doing...
I don't know. You okay with that? I'd like to know what you're saying.
That's what he just told us, but you want to tell us again?
Okay. We are telling people in Commerce City to understand the needs of people that don't have food. And food, easy to make food items is a favorite of sandwiches. And the absentee food bank runs low on this food item all year. So would you like that?
Good, thank you. And Mr. Aker, if you would get whatever information we need from this gentleman, just a short little capsule on, this is what you're looking for, so that we make the letter look right, sir, if you would maybe help your son. And we'll get it out when he needed by.
Um, I, as soon as possible.
That would be fine. It doesn't seem, I didn't see it very difficult to do. Mr. Aker, if you would like whatever information you need?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Is that for the mayor's signature or city manager's signature?
Uh, the mayor's.
So we have a consensus from the council, and you authorize the mayor's...
Anybody on council have a challenge with this? Thank you. And if you could, you put up the bottom end, the council approves, and then they'll just sign. Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have to do work.
Okay, there's only one resolution tonight that was not included in the consent agenda because it requires a separate voice vote. It's Resolution 2011-01. Alright. A recipe should amend it to directory of city fees and charges. Any discussion from city council? Okay, good. Thank you. Mr. Moreno.
Actually, I would like, if staff could just briefly go over the charges, if any have changed since the previous year, if there's been any increases or decreases. If someone could go over that for us.
And it appears the lights are now working, because I just got this from McAdams. So we may be coming back. Mayor, Councilman, Mrs. Moreno will have the private statement for the finding director go over that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll keep looking. I'll keep looking for him.
Sorry for the delay. I was confirming with Mr. Gaylor for a moment there. What my staff does, do, a staff member does, a review of the fees with the individual departments that influence the fees. And periodically, yes, they do change. The bulk of these changes, however, are simply cleanup due to the revised municipal code, the new adopted municipal code. And so references have changed. Some fees actually went away. And then there are some new fees that are shown here, but that were adopted previously by ordinance. And so the only reason to put them into the directory is to have a consolidated reference for all of the staff members to be able to use, rather than know that most are new here, but some are in the ordinance, in the code book. So that's the bulk of the change. The changes were reviewed in the council communication, which is fairly extensive. But in terms of the numbers themselves, the numbers that are listed there did not change. So I don't know if there's any other question than that, but... No, just thank you for providing that report with me.
Mr. McAdams. This is a very big motion. Oh, okay. Any other discussion?
I have one comment for the council. In your packet, there was a change from what you have in your packet, a minor change. If you will refer to Exhibit A, the last paragraph of Exhibit A on page section 49, 57, it's a paragraph D entitled landfill operations license. You see where I'm referring to?
Yep.
What we have here is on the solid waste landfill license and hazardous waste landfill license. Those two provisions are really not license fees, but you may think of them as a tipping fee. You may recall the 5% fee that's imposed on the fees that are collected at the site for disposing of the items. And that 5% fee is better referred to as an operations fee, not a license fee. And we collect that, the city collects that each year. It's 5% of the funds received from disposing of materials at the landfill site. So the correction should be indeed, we're taking out what you see as solid waste license and we're taking out what you see as hazardous waste landfill license. And instead, the, that provision dealing with the 5% fee which you find there with this service charge be following me, that service charge is moved over to landfill operations fees, which is under Section 9. Otherwise, what you have in front of you is correct. And those numbers that you have are correct, with the exception, the solid waste landfill license and hazardous waste landfill license should be included.
Any other discussion from council, or would you be ready? Seeing, seeing none, I'll hand a motion to McAdams. Move to approve Resolution 711-01. 01, the modifications that require... Ms. Snyder.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2011-01. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of Resolution 2011-01 reads, "Resolution amending the directory of city fees and charges."
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorney has read the title. Request a voice vote please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same, motion passed the same. There's one ordinance on second reading. It's ordinance 1845, an ordinance adopting with amendments those provisions previously codified as Article 11 of Chapter, Article 2, I'm sorry, of Chapter 18 regarding the police pension fund. Does council have any further questions or discussion? Mr. Moreno.
So I'd like to explain, on first reading, I voted against this ordinance, because I do, I felt and still do feel that a retired member of the police force should remain on that board after discussions with Mr. Gaylor. And seeing that there is language in there, considering that if a retired member is available, that they'd be seated on that, I, I am prepared to support it on, on second reading.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm open to a motion to approve the ordinance on second reading. Ms. Snyder.
Yes, the reader approved the ordinance 1845 on second reading. How do we see it?
Hey, Mr. Johnson.
Take a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance on second reading. Will city attorney please read the title?
Title of ordinance 1845 reads as follows, an ordinance adopting with amendments those provisions previously codified as Article 2 of Chapter 18 entitled Police Pension Fund of the vote of ordinances of the City of Commerce City.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorney has read the title. Give me your roll. Call vote please.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman McAdams.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Yes.
Councilman Snyder.
Yes.
Councilman Carson.
Aye.
Councilman Benson.
Yes.
Councilman Moreno.
Aye.
Mayor Cal.
Yes.
The vote is nine aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is administrative council business. Again, remember that this is some action that you're requesting council to take. It is not recourse. Mr. Bullock.
Oh, yes. A couple of minutes back, maybe it was three minutes back, there was a, a move by council or something that I really didn't understand to stop people from making certain reports during our reports time. And I would like to rescind that and say if a member wants to spend 30 seconds to a minute to talk about something, regardless of what it is, to give them that time, because I think it is well better spent starting off 2011 just getting things out of the way and giving people the happy times than having the time of discord. So my suggestion is, if Mr. Benson would like to spend 30 seconds to a minute to cheer on his football team or anything else that any other council member would like to do, let's give us that time instead of spending the time of discord and disaway.
Don't see any problem with that at all, sir. And if meetings run late, hopefully we will be smart enough or prudent enough to cut that time down. I don't see any challenge anybody, council have a problem with that? Seeing none, we go on. Mr. Gary Nelson, or Mr. Benson?
Yes, I wanted to bring forward to the council and ask for the council's direction to direct the staff to conduct a study about the piece of vote throughout the representative vote in the northern part of the city. This would be without raising taxes, but utilizing any cash on hand, the, our bonding capacity, any grants, we have the structure, so we can apply for and receive several grants. This is, my number one concern for three years has been groceries. And I think that, that issue has been addressed, and I think that's going to happen. The second most important matter, based for people who don't live in a union, is a rec center in the northern part of the city. Just like the, the comments from council, and last year was important to direct the staff to have such a stuff.
Mr. McAdams, only because you figure out these meetings, would this be a smart thing to move into our, as you've come up here?
Yeah, she suggested it's a perfect item for studying this, for a very discovered, unadmitted, customary of the council. That you have to have small staff or regular review, and you still have to put it out there now. I was actually a bit suspicious, trying to schedule that discussion, so. I mean, is it very next year's, well, it's going to be, but you have that discussion in progress for all of our very...
Go ahead, sir.
I think that's appropriate time to discuss it. I would just hope that my guy, kind of, staff, could have done some research, some study to tell us what your season might have. Because the budget from the previous, still a little study session.
Mr. Aker, if you, if you have staff, direct some preliminary information.
We could, yeah, in regard, staff desire to gather some of that as part of the long range management plan. So that will be part of our, of our discussion as we move forward this year. So I think staff will have that information as a part of what we're already putting together for that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that I hope it's convincing about this as well, and that I do support having a study done so that we can be, you know exactly what it would take to get that thing done, and also work that.
And again, hopefully without a tax increase. No tax increases, but that's your next one.
You have other ideas?
Yes, sir. Concerning the music fest, you know, I've brought this up before. You know, I've seen the ads over the past year. There's no mention that the music fest is in Commerce City. You can't, okay. Concerning the music fest and the advertising that I've seen over the last couple of years, there's been no mention that... Did you ever hear the discussion about the northern rec center?
No. Not at all.
Well, I think the council decided that the staff is going to come up with some sort of a preliminary data that we'll discuss at our budget recruiting in January towards the feasibility of doing a rec center out north, you know, with our mining capacity, even hostile, they're getting grants depending on how, but that measure is structured. And I think council, you know, well, you have this, and I think it has approved going ahead with that. So that'll be something that will take up in our budget. The next thing was concerning the music fest. And I haven't seen in the advertisers for that either, the ones I've heard on the radio, the ones I've seen in print, that this is an event that's taking place in Commerce City, Colorado. I think a lot of people think that it's happening in Denver. Fans think that they're in Denver. I would just, if we, whatever we can do, and I don't know what we can do, I... I would just, whatever we can do, and I don't know what we can do, I think that all we can do is request, AEGY, that we please give us some publicity because this is in fact occurring in Commerce City. And we're being allowed to use twenty-four soccer fields to do this. And I don't know, I don't know if there's going to be a problem with that in that mission in Commerce City, but how can we, and I'd ask the council, how can we make our wishes known in this regard? I don't want to irritate anybody, I just want to let people know that we would like to have Commerce City as a credit for having this event. Anybody else have any ideas?
First name, maybe you can talk to your colleagues.
There. Well, that's not Brittany's job.
Well, I know.
I know. You could.
Mr. Aker, maybe when we get into those negotiations, that particular, because I think that's a concern probably of the entire council.
We'll make sure we bring it on.
Get it under my hands, sir?
I had a comment.
Can you add a comment?
I think the city through particularly economic development has done a lot of that, has done a lot of that co-branding of that particular event, making sure that in everything that economic development does, that they mention that the music fest is one of the largest music festivals in Denver and it is in Commerce City. I don't think it's a situation unique to Commerce City. I think when bands come to, for example, Red Rocks, they say, "How you doing Denver?" Red Rocks is not in Denver. So I don't think that it's particularly unique to our situation. But I do think that economic development has been successful in making sure that people know that that event does happen in Commerce City.
Thank you, sir. Just one last item. I think we discussed the outreaches at a previous meeting, that we would have the next June outreach in reunion. I just wanted to reiterate that, make sure that the staff, as the council is still agree that we're going to have the next outreach in reunion, not sound law, but reunion, because we never have one of those, of course. So can we just ask the staff to make sure that that happens this year?
Mr. Aker?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought you were going to make a comment, but I know we had directed that in the fact.
And we'll confirm that with staff based on scheduling with reunion and what's going on with the fees at reunion.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Actually, just wanted to maybe a brief discussion or ask staff if we have scheduled the reviews for city manager, planning, city attorney, Gaylor, so we can go over those. I don't know if those have been put on an agenda yet.
They have not as of yet, but you have a question which will help us in getting those schedules. Previous, I think earlier this year, we scheduled like five thirty for those due in advance. Would you like to do that again?
I would obviously defer to the council and Mr. McAlvey.
Yeah, we have a discussion that I agree with last mention. That's pretty good.
I mean, my line is, help us back up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a question.
We'll give those a discussion. They'll be yet this month, I anticipate.
Appreciate it. I just actually have one more question about an annual retreat, if that's in the works. Staff.
The city manager and I have discussed that briefly. We're thinking sometime late January, maybe into February this year, but we will, we coordinate the calendars and see whether we can get that.
Great. I know councilman Teeter had some issues with it being in January. I would have no problem early February if that were to work there.
Well, last week is weekend, hopefully January, first part of the year.
Okay.
Thank Mr. Moreno for bringing up that. Thank you. But what comment, though, I know we talked, we talked a long, we talked about the e-mop films. We talked about the e-mop films?
Quick thanks to Mr. Moreno for bringing up that. On that new relative to the planning retreat, one of the items that we talked about when we kicked off the long range financial plan was where that would be in its evolution in advance of us having that sit down. That would be part of a long, so that we could take some of the work done and use it to help bring that discussion. So to Mr. Moreno's point, I'd like to see us get that on the calendar, see what we can make sure that it's scheduled relative to a few liberal or a few progress on that so that we can.
Mayor, council members, we'll definitely take that into account and I'll give you, we'll give you an update next week on where we are in relation to the calendar.
Thanks. Do you have any other? Perfect. Ms. Snyder?
Couple of brief things. Quickly, it was mentioned last week or the last time that we met that there were some questions floating around about possibilities of some individuals that might be coming forward with some interest in doing something above low run. And I just wanted to let the council know that I did receive some information from a group that's interested in talking to the city about that. And I am passing that information on to city manager, Plenary, so that he can take a look at that and then bring it back to council. So I just want to let everybody know that I have received something and I'm putting that over. And the second thing is, I would like to ask the council if it would be okay with you if we had some entryway, I don't know if it would be like a placard or just some kind of something, that's some of the, at least the two main entryways that say home of the 2010 MLS soccer champions. I think that's something that we should be very proud of and that we should, you know, let people know when they're coming into our city that we have the Rapids here and not only just the Rapids, but the MLS champions for 2010. So I'd like to ask the council's permission to have staff look into getting some placards, at least at the six and eighty-five and the one coming down sixty, that staff could look at where the most appropriate places for that would be, maybe one on Mark, I'm not sure how you would think would be the best, but do I have council's permission to have staff look at that?
Mr. McAlvey?
It does look great idea. I mean, if we did conjunction with some of the monuments, there's a deeper, there does look to be an idea to do something.
Yeah, appreciate that. And of course, I'm sorry, councilman Moreno?
I think when we discussed this last, you know, congratulating the Rapids, that was one of the things that council did bring up, the possibility of doing that, so absolutely complete support.
And I'm sure we could do it in a way that, you know, goes along the same lines of the monuments, the theme of the monuments, that it could look, you know, however it needs to be designed to look like, you know, part of the facade and everything of monuments, you know, so that it would go along with it. But I think it would go a long way, and I think to let people know, hey, we have a championship that was played and we won it, it's here and go us. So I'm excited about it, so I thought I would ask about that.
Mr. Aker, if you could look into that and present council with some options, maybe?
We'll take a look and we'll do that.
That'd be great. Thank you. That's all the copper administrative business. Anyone else?
So on to reports, Mr. Gaylor.
I don't have anything additional to what we discussed tonight, just wish council a happy new year and look forward to good things in 2011.
Mr. Aker?
I have some good news to share courtesy of those who are investing in our city. We just got a report out on the total number of units which are permitted this year. It would reach two hundred and thirty-one compared to last year's number of a hundred and thirty. And the valuation, and that's just the valuation from a permit fee standpoint, was a hundred and, rough numbers, a hundred and seventeen million, a hundred million dollars.
How many did we project?
We projected, I almost said something like eighty now, and actually reduced it from what we saw last year in the projection, so it's a good sign that we can continue that trend.
Anything else, sir? Mr. Bullock? No report? Mr. McAlvey?
No report.
He's pretty honest, I believe, no report. Ms. Teeter?
I'm on the way back from DIA yesterday afternoon, the entrance monument there off the town road, it's beautiful. And a lot of people were, you know, they're surprised, hey, we're in Commerce City, so that's good news. Good job, guys. Thanks.
Mr. Aker?
I just wanted to quickly say I wish everyone, I hope everyone had a happy new year. Let me get this straight off the holidays. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I'm definitely looking forward to the things that we can all do together in the following year, so I really am looking forward to 2011 and I know we're going to all work together and we're going to make things happen. Thanks.
My report, just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year and to say how excited I am of the prospects of everything coming up. So happy new year to everyone.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, and I guess since the last two weeks included, Christmas and New Year, so I didn't go to any meetings, but I do want to hope and wish everybody that you had a Merry Christmas and wish you'd have a prosperous 2011. And congratulate Ms. Teeter and her husband on the Oklahoma victory and Mr. Aker and Mr. Brainerd on Oklahoma State's victory in the Oklahoma. Congratulations to you two. That's all I have.
Mr. Benson? You want to compliment your appointment?
Oh, yes. I was, Dr. Cobb wanted me to be the alternate member of the state transportation advisory committee.
Awesome.
So I'll be on to that once in a while, along with the wheel tour. From over, it will be the member, I'll be the alternate member. I think I can learn a lot from the wheel, so I'll look forward to getting in there. Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Ms. Grateria? I just wanted to say that I had the chance to attend the holiday senior birthday lunch and just want to put out my sincere thanks to neighborhood services and your department of the city for the amazing gifts that they're giving away to the seniors in this community. I mean, pot, police blankets, candy, just everything you could think of, really great gifts that people can use. And it's nice to see that they were, that they were getting something for the holidays. Neighborhood services, very generous department and I really appreciate it. I just want to inform council of two really exciting things that were discussed at the review board that I was at with Ms. Snyder. The building on the southwest corner of where we did our intersection improvements was purchased and those, the guys that applied for catalyst funds are already looking to start renovating the building. They want to get some community nonprofits in there, maybe, maybe look at some karate or dance studios, really, really cool, exciting stuff that I think the communities that are really grown. And the other, Ben Martinez of Albertine, applied for catalyst funds, looking to add on a lounge onto Albertine and just to give people an extra place where they're waiting for their meal, they can have a drink before dinner. So it's, it's really exciting to see that Albertine is continuing to make improvements to their business and I think we're starting to see the climate investment come in from that commitment that the city makes, so really exciting stuff. That's all I have. Happy new year to everyone.
Okay, I'm showing seven fourteen, which has got to be some type of record. And anybody who wants to complain about taxes, England, England just raised their value add tax from seventeen and a half to twenty percent, every time you're waiting by twenty percent, right, tax up. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned. Did you have something?
I just have my CD and my bag.
Okay. Mayor? Do we, do we have any other candidates up here? Do you have something for me? Can you come up, you all can come down? No?
I have a bad problem.
Oh, okay, good. Well, second we can, that's right. Okay.
Happy new year.
Happy new year to you.